Right, it is six.
It is six P M. Uh call this meeting toward please rise for the pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance to.
Oh, you're very nice place with the mayor. It just means me all I like to experience. One I should ever go in. In principle, we learn to do it.
Next item, we have the rule call. Chad, how will we handle a rule call typically we come in and say we're here. But do a rule caller.
Like you just state your name and say here.
Okay. Matt, uh trustee Lancaster.
So we got a question, right?
Yeah.
Just go ahead for now. Okay, uh Matt Lancaster here.
Wait, where am I? We're here.
Scott Hanske here.
To involve him here.
And Frank is uh excuse for this meeting. So please make it on the time he is excuse. Uh next we have identification of potential conflicts of interest. Uh anyone here have any conflicts of interest on any of the agenda items before us as a board? I say we don't. Okay, next up we have correspondence or communication from board and staff. Anyone have any comments? Yeah, so then. Sorry, we got a new uh. Mic system that all our requests is become to the mic, so. We're trying multiple persons, so we'll be seeing my names here. Go ahead, sorry.
Uh we had a fire call yesterday with a man caught in a skid steer on fire. And I'd like to give a shout out to two Department of Public Works employees, him, Harris and deputy. The Department of Public Works guys took a. If you're familiar with skid steer, arms are up and couldn't get the front door. And kicked and kicked and he couldn't get the glass out and uh public works employees were on a big paper and smashed the glass. And saved the man's life. So I'd like to give him. And the deputies. A kudos on that. Good job.
Yes, thank you. Very good. Appreciate that as well. Um. Check can we get a recognition for those individuals that did that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um. Anyone else have any comments? Uh I will mention that I attended the East Central Planning Commission Policy Committee meeting this last week. And I handed everyone uh for a map that was up for approval. Um which is all of the roads in the East Central Planning Commission uh region for. Uh principal arteries, minor arteries, major collector roads. So you can see there were one, two, three updates they proposed. Um but one thing that I had mentioned during this meeting is if you look at that. Map KK is labeled a minor artery. So we as myself, um the mayor of Appleton. And um the Odeguemi County Chairperson. Agreed with me that KK should be updated from a minor artery to a major artery. And why this is important is because. Based on the East Central Planning Commission's scoring. Of awarding projects, you get more points for what a road is a major artery than a minor artery. Why is this significant is because for ten years. KK has been labeled mislabeled in my opinion and also the opinion of the mayor and uh Buchanan is. KK should have always been labeled a mu- a major artery, which is probably the reason why KK has not gotten any funding over the last ten years, so. Um this is gonna be adjusted. Waiting for DOT comments on making the change for KK um to be a major artery. Um that will coincide with the first item up in new business, which will hopefully um. Oh. Score. Uh KK project in the future, so um I just wanted everyone to be aware that. Um I'm working hard to secure. Uh funding and and getting at least on everyone's radar that KK needs to be addressed uh. Right now, so that's all I have. Uh next item is corrections and approval of the previous ordinance. So we're gonna need a motion and a second for this.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of uh. It's May twenty seven, twenty twenty five, it's printed in circulate. It's not green here. Okay, yeah, I'd like to make a motion. To approve uh the May twenty seventh minutes of sprinting circulated.
Let push your button to request a speak, you'll be on a second, but now. Call secretary. Okay, we got a motion by trustee Van Hefti and a second by trustee Brandmeier. Any discussion? If not, go ahead and vote your ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next item, public comments. Okay, right now we don't have anyone signed up for public comments. Is there anybody in the crowd that would like to speak on anything? If not. We'll move on. Okay, next up we have a presentation, uh CLA Annual Financial. Support Review.
Yeah, it's in the public queue.
There we go, you're lying.
All set. Not sure if I should be scared or not. Uh I. We flip through. I think. Megan has it, so if we go to, there's just an introduction slide as um improbably a new face to to all of you. Um my name is Amber Geruski. I'm a principal in our Green Bay office uh of CLA. I've been doing a state and local government for over fifteen years. Um so I do all municipal uh work, county work, school district work, so um. Hopefully, if you if you have any questions, feel free to reach out or ask. Uh if I don't have an answer, I'll try to hunt up to an answer and find it for you. Um. And where we're at is the the village ha- does have a draft copy of the financial statements and the rep letter in hand. Uh to sign and and review. And send back to us, so we are we are through all of our audit testing and all of our QC procedures, so that's where we're at, so I'm gonna present on. Um everything that I have and you'll be getting a final copy here in the next couple of weeks. Uh one, once we get that rep letter back, so I'm in really good position, so. We go to the next slide, just a few things uh from a from a required communication standpoint. Um can actually if you go back one more. There we go. So our responsibility is to issue an opinion underneath the standards. And management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. What we do during the audit process is we use a risk-based approach, materiality thresholds and so forth, so we don't look at all of the transactions in the village. But we do look at a fair amount. Um and the the rest of that is done through uh inquiry and review of internal controls, so we don't give an opinion on those controls. But we would be required to disclose anything uh that's material weakness, significant deficiency. Or any compliance issues that we have, so I have a summary of all of that uh in a couple of slides, but. Um just a couple other items, significant accounting policies. Uh those are all noted in note one of the financial statements. Uh it's probably some good nighttime nighttime reading. Um Gatsby one oh one uh from a policy standpoint was evaluated, that is new for fiscal year twenty four. That was evaluated, but was immaterial to the village's financial statements. The Gatsby one hundred uh was also reviewed and implemented. What that means is for Gatsby one hundred. Is there are some ghost columns, they call them, in your financial statement, so if you're looking through the financial statements and you see a blank column. Uh maybe has one number that is intentional. Uh what they wanna do is be transparent in when a fund moves from the back to the front of the financial statements or vice versa, so. Uh that is intel- uh in- intentional, excuse me. And Gatsby one oh one, I should have clarified, relates to compensated absences, so uh the recording of. Unused or eligible to be paid out compensated absences, so that relates uh to one oh one. We noted that there was no unusual transactions. And if you go to the next slide. There are some estimates that are included in the financial statements, there's just none that are required to be communicated governance from a significant standpoint. Uh the most common are the Wisconsin retirement system and the depreciation of the capital assets. We determined that all the disclosures are adequate, clear and complete, and we did not have any uh disagreements with management. On that same note, uh we didn't have any uh disagreements or difficulties encountered in performing the audit. If we go to the next slide, the rep letter will signify management approving the financial statements, and that is. Them taking responsibility for for those, as I mentioned. Uh when our responsibility to station an opinion is management's responsibility for the preparation of fair presentation. If we go to the next slide. There were some corrective misstatements that we made, uh meaning that once we got a trial balance, we had some adjustments. Um and the most, I'm gonna say the most significant ones were the tax rule. And the capital project revenue and expense that I'll kind of talk about a little bit. And then uh recording in advance for TID five, that was previously, that goes back a few years. Uh and no uncorrected misstatements were noted. So a summary on this next slide, a summary of the audit results. We issued a clean, unmodified opinion, that's the highest opinion we could provide from an audit standpoint. The internal control findings, as I mentioned, we would be required to disclose any of of those. Uh though we had two, the preparation of the annual financial report, very common, we prepare probably ninety five percent of our clients' financial statements. It is very important that the village then reviews and approves those financial statements, ties them out to your records. Uh and make sure that you're in agreement with any of the adjustments. That goes into the adjustments to the village's financial records, uh as I mentioned, we had made some of those adjustments. And and we're working with village uh with Alyssa and the rest of the team to um. Kind of set up some templates and record those going forward, so um I would say in really good shape and and I. Look forward to continuing to work on that here in in fiscal year twenty five. And we did not have any uh compliance issues to know. So those are kind of the the summarized um. Non-financial pieces, so jumping into the financial piece, uh this is just a a graph visual of the general fund. As of December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Uh most of it is assigned, for the most part, it's been assigned and unassigned. The assigned portion, there is about four point eight million that's assigned. That is assigned for the fire station uh building, there is uh an assignment for fire equipment as well included within that total. And then there is restricted for fire protection and about a hundred and seventy seven thousand. The non-spendable portion, that little uh that nine percent. So the restricted portion, blue, is the one seventy six. The non-spendable, the nine percent, is the nine hundred and ninety five thousand, that that would be on your financials. That does also include the fire truck that was prepaid. So those numbers are kind of in both intentionally, um just because of some upcoming projects and 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 keeping that earmarked. The forty six percent uh unassigned fund balance represents about five point three million. So the five point three million I'll talk about here in a second, but if you go to the next slide. This is the breakdown of those assigned fund balances. Uh so the fire truck, the nine hundred and twenty seven thousand fire equipment, which has, there's about four different. Um categories in there, uh about forty nine thousand fire station, about three point eight million, and election equipment, uh about eight thousand dollars. Go to the next slide, this is just a picture of the unassigned fund balance, going back to twenty twenty one. The bottom, that light blue line is the minimum fund balance recommendation, so. For a long time, there was i- in the industry, it was recommended to be, say, between fifteen and twenty percent or ten to. Ten to twenty, uh you could give or take a little bit from a fund balance perspective in your unassigned. That number is ever changing and and that now after COVID inflation and so forth, things cost more money. Uh so that recommendation has increased more to be in that twenty to even thirty five percent range from a recommendation, but. That number doesn't always have to be within that range, it depends on your community, uh what you. What you have going on, what kind of capital needs you have. What uh your cash flow looks like, are you very heavily reliant on tax levy? Uh or state aids, because that unassigned fund balance really helps you avoid. A short-term borrowing and so forth from a cash flow perspective. So that unassigned, just like in our everyday lives, where it's recommended to have X amount of ex- X amount of months of expenses in your savings account. That's what this is uh from a government perspective. So generally, that twenty five percent. Will get you about three months worth of expenses. So that's that's where the number approximately comes from. The village is is obviously higher, so that blue number is is higher. Um that has. That's a healthy fund balance, but again, you gotta make sure that that fits, that fits the village. What is your long-term goals, what are your capital needs? You really wanna use that fund balance for one-time expenditures, whether it's a one-time operating or a one-time capital need. Uh but you don't wanna build that into a reoccurring operational costs. Uh and you, and if you're applying fund balance to balance your budget each year. That's where the unassigned, you you'd need to have a higher unassigned fund balance, if that's what you're doing, because as you continue to do that. It'll eat that unassigned fund balance down over time. Any questions on? On that fund balance? If we look at twenty four, um it it did drop down a little bit. Um some of the highlights from a budget perspective, if you go ahead a couple of slides. Then one more, some of the increases in the in the budget and and what kind of drove the surplus for twenty twenty four. Was there was a lot of capital outlay under budget, just timing of when things happened or came in, uh project timing, et cetera. Uh and then interest, interest was a big thing, uh exceeded budget by three hundred and thirty thousand, which is typical, you don't wanna budget for interest. Uh you don't wanna over-budget for interest uh any on any given year, because once you start to build that into your budget. And rates drop, now you have built that in as a revenue. And it's not a constant, so same thing with like donations, those types of items. Um licenses and permits also exceeded budget by about a hundred and ninety five thousand, so. Uh outside of the capital outlay, in the expense side, it was pretty comparable. Um but again, some of those uh revenues came in over anticipated, which then led to the led to the surplus for twenty twenty. Twenty twenty four. If you go to the next slide, just a a couple, there's a lot of numbers on here, so I just wanna kind of point out a couple of things. Uh the debt service, uh that was in a deficit position in twenty twenty three. And there was a transfer made to make that whole in twenty twenty four, so that is a positive circle, a positive fund balance now. The capital projects has about nine million, that it in, that is almost all uh unspent on proceeds, so. That is timing of of capital, that that will happen. Uh one of the things that I wanna point out here on the capital side i- is and with the. The general fund and the capital outlays, making sure as you go through your budget process for twenty twenty six. Making sure that you're aligning your expenses with the sources, uh the revenue sources. So if the revenue sources are in the capital projects, making sure that those um capital outlay expenditures are in the capital project fund. Um there was a transfer that we ma- ended up making in twenty twenty four to kind of true that out for some prior year numbers. Uh but just making sure as you budget that that there's some consistency there. Ideally, you'd pull all of your capital items out of your general fund, keep all those in the capital projects fund. It also helps from an operational standpoint in what you're reviewing. Monthly in your. The other, the other funds, uh you have your fire department impact fees about eight hundred, just shy of nine hundred thousand. Park impact fees about four hundred and thirty six thousand. Stormwater, a surplus of about three hundred and sixty nine thousand. Um TID one, uh seven hundred and nine thousand in fund balance, TID two a deficit of five fifteen. Um and TID three, a surplus of a hundred and fifty seven thousand. TID four, a surplus of a hundred and fifty three, TID five, a deficit of one point one million. And TID six, deficit of about two hundred and sixty one thousand. Those TIDS are very new in terms of when they started, so those deficits I would not be alarmed by at this point in time. Uh it's just a lot of the timing of the project costs happen, land purchases, so forth, and then when the increments are gonna be collected, so. If we go to the. We'll actually skip through the next slide, uh yes, I'll stay here, the legal debt margin, so. We talked about a lot of the unspent bond proceeds, uh being in that capital projects fund, about nine million. Uh where that ties in is where's your legal debt margin at? Uh so the legal debt margin for the village remains at about eighty nine million in capacity. Uh there's fourteen million in in general obligation debt outstanding uh at December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Next slide goes into the proprietary funds. And I only have the cash flows here because. Um to me, the balance sheet and the income statement can kind of be misleading when you when you kind of look at those, so I like to look at the cash flow and see. What kind of story that can tell me, because there's non-cash items in those other reports, so the water utility. Uh at December thirty first generated operations of about a hundred and eighty two thousand dollars cash from operations. And uh used uh cash of about a hundred and fifty four thousand in capital needs, there is no debt in the water utility. Interest generated was about a hundred and twenty six thousand, coming to a change of a hundred and fifty four thousand. The water utility had a rate of return in twenty twenty four of about six point seven percent, uh as opposed to eight point four in twenty twenty three. Um. And. That's a healthy cash balance, uh what that leads to is two point six million, especially considering. The village doesn't have any towers or wells in that you're purchasing, so. Really what you're what you're building cash for are your increases in your infrastructure, your mains. That allows you to maybe minimize the amount of debt that you have to borrow or gives you options in terms of. If if a developer comes in with a project, you can kind of analyze if the village can handle, if the utility can handle that. Um or if the developer should handle that, so a healthy rate of return. With that healthy rate of return, though, um and Brandon and I've talked, and Alyssa and I've talked. The PSC is not generally gonna be generous in terms of a a rate increase or a simplified. So keeping in mind that without a simple, uh simplified, which would keep up with inflation. If they're not gonna allow, they're typically not gonna allow that because of the high rate of return. So as you look and you look at projects, make sure that you're balancing that, because a a full conventional would have to happen. But you'd wanna make sure then that it's a major project or how you're how you're balancing that. The sewer side uh generated about four hundred and fifty nine thousand in cash from operations and used about three hundred and forty one thousand. Um with the acquisition of the capital and then some of the that. The debt of forty three thousand. But that debt is that need of Manasha, that's an asset reliability. The interest received about a hundred and eighty seven thousand, coming to a change of three hundred and six total. Again, a healthy fund balance, um or deposition and cash balance within those funds. But just continuing to balance what your capital needs are and where that. So come from, how your rates reflect that over time. Or the next slide. So just in in summary, just some comments and observations that I had, um being being new to the village. Um just continuing to enhance policies and procedures, you've had some turnover and things like that, it's a perfect opportunity. To kind of enhance those written document, a doc- the written documentation on those policies and procedures. Uh and really, the policy is the policy, but the procedures, um those include the internal controls, so. What's the, what's the review process, approval process? Uh whether it be within management or maybe it's at the board level, uh making sure that that's included. The budget consistency, uh as I. Recommended from a capital expenditure standpoint and then the uh the sources as it relates to those capital expenditures. And then you do have a number of TIDS, so just making sure that we're monitoring the progress and the audit requirements on those. That's something Alyssa and I've already talked about, I'm working on setting up some spreadsheets that the village can. Kind of keep up to date uh year to year, and then we can evaluate that, you are required to have an audit at the thirty percent of the expenditure life. At the end of the expenditure period and at the end of the TID uh per state statutes. The state doesn't want copies of that, they want you to keep it, but they require you to do it, so. Uh and then just at the end, some upcoming Gatsby standards, I'm not gonna get into the details of that. Um read that on your free time, but a couple that would be applicable are certain risk disclosures, meaning if you have. Uh a significant customer or a significant property taxpayer uh that would have some changes that maybe be required to be disclosed in the financial statements. Gatsby one oh three, the financial reporting model, that will primarily affect the water and sewer and making sure that we're classifying things correctly between. Um operating and non-operating, and then should the village ever add an M D N A, there's some requirements there. And then Gatsby one oh four relates to capital assets. Uh if they are going to be held for sale or if they're disposed, so we will continue to evaluate those uh as they become applicable to the village in the year implemented. Otherwise, any questions?
Anyone on the board have any comments? If not, I appreciate it, thank you. Um staff, Alyssa, you have any questions around?
No, we can work as very closely, so things have been working out.
Okay, great, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Well, okay, next up we have reports, everyone got reports, um. Could open the floor to the board if they have any questions about the reports. I guess one question I had is concerning the. Light fixture in the park that was probably damaged. Um maybe in the progress or figure out what had happened to.
Yes.
Light fixture.
Yes, um Lowny's admitted to backing over it.
Say who?
Lowny's, the tree, the tree people.
Tree people.
They um they emailed me, they, the guy did confess, so they are. Gonna be working with us, we gotta get a price on it and whatever, and they'll write a check out.
Okay. Well, I seen it happen, I know it was a. Something that people were wondering, yeah, what was going on with that, so I appreciate the update. Any other comments or questions about the reports?
So all I would say is that we're busy um. Working to uh get everything out of the uh DPW garage, because on July seventh, they're coming in and putting in epoxy. Flooring on the Florida Billow's divots that are in there, so. The new s- uh shed at the end has been moved onto the new slab and. We're physically cleaning out the garage in order to get everything ready for that first phase and then after that. Um seven in July, they'll be working to start um footings and foundation for a standing building here. And then July, oh sorry, June thirtieth is when we're opening the bids for the fire station. And I found out today that Myron and two other generals are are gonna be submitting a bid, so hopefully. The numbers will come in where we need them to come in, so postponing it has been beneficial.
I guess my only question about that is, is that. Normal for us to think about when we. Time our request for reports, making sure we don't do it during.
Yeah, typically, we as staff try to push them out in the winter season. Um as I've kinda communicated or emailed, there's a lot of schoolwork out there that. A lot of referendums been passed and there was a lot of schoolwork that got done, so a lot of these generals are really pounding the sand to get for school stuff done. So it's a lesson learned on the timing related to the school biz as well, yes.
Great. All right, any other questions or comments on reports, if not, we will move on. Um I'm sure uh the process speed. Trustee Lancaster. Just remind me on the generator, you're out here and you're waiting for delivery, have they given us an ETA on that?
Yeah, they reported today that um it should be here sometime in July, so in the first couple of weeks of July, and then they. Are waiting for some additional cabinetry, so the generator might be some other cabinets that are needed for it, but. Um they're working as fast as they can.
Okay, so the next item we have on the agenda is the approval of bill and players. We're gonna need a morning and a second. Trustee Baldwin.
Thank you, I'll make a motion to approve bills and claims, um the man twenty twenty five is presented in circulate.
We have a motion by trustee Baldwin. Call secretary now. So we have a second by trustee Brandmeier. Any discussion? If not. If not, go ahead and vote your ballot. It looks like we have a unanimous vote. Motion passes. Um, next item, old business. Looks like we don't have any old business. Is that really possible that we don't have any?
Yes, that's too sick of us.
All right, new business. Twelve A.
Resolution.
Wait, I guess we got.
Oh, I just was gonna make a motion. I'm gonna go ahead first.
All right, um, resolution twenty twenty-five twelve, support for future year twenty twenty-five safe streets and roads for all S S four A grant application with Alba Gaby and Kelly McCombs. Harrison, Kokona, Appleton, and Buchanan for County Highway K K corridor. And the motion is to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve to support for the future year twenty twenty-five. Safe streets and roads for all S S four A grant application.
So I want to thank everyone, staff, staff too for attending what you have and staff for working so hard on this. And with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve is printed and circulated.
Second motion.
So we have a motion by trustee Lancaster and a second by trustee Baldwin. Any discussion? I guess I will uh make a quick comment on this. So, um. This is very near, near me and when we attended this. Um, uh, the Central Planning Commission Policy Committee meeting. There was a lot of consensus from uh Appleton. I look forward to meeting the mayor and see what we can do collaboratively between Appleton and Harrison. To get Buchanan and uh the rest of the. Entities such as Kelly McCounty and Algaian County to uh move this forward. So that we can not only get the study done, but that to implement awarding the funding. And I know Chad, you and I have discussed this. This is probably a fifty million dollar upgrade, but with more than what. Uh, money that they allot every year for projects. So we're going to hopefully try to get them to pare down. K K into separate projects to fit within the dollar amount on the yearly block grant awarding. And so um, this is the first step. So I appreciate the support for for this motion. If there's no more discussion, let's go ahead and vote your ballots. And motion passes unanimously. Next up is item twelve E.
Um, this is the review, review and possible amendments of the draft comprehensive plan and there can be either motion or motions as a term.
So with this, um, it was requested by trustee Lancaster and by trustee Grant Meyer to uh propose. Um, changes to the currents of the comprehensive plan. Um, so with that, I will ask that these individuals be able to um. Make your changes and begin to make votes accordingly. Thank you, Mr. President. So yes, I do have a couple of of things that I believe should be changed in this plan before this goes to the public hearing. And through the formal process in July. Um, I had one question for for staff and then I actually am going to make, if it's okay with the rest of the board here, a few motions. Because I'm hoping to spur some discussion um and see where the board sits on a few of these items. So my first question though. On page sixty-three of the comprehensive plan.
You don't have any, no. You just asked what introductions?
Yes, I can. I don't want to get out too much shot here. Hold on. I mean, this, this, when we warned us about that.
You're fine.
I'm okay. I didn't listen. You said, don't move things.
At least you watched the video.
I did. I did. I actually know the video too. So I, what it talks about on page sixty-three, my question is for low-density residential. The compatible zoning is listed as R S two and R T. And I was thinking that for a low-density residential, that should also be including R S one.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, because a couple of my motions are going to be to change things to low-density residential. So I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page that way. So, okay.
All right.
I did ask then Chad to get maps for you guys all, so you have your maps here. And I believe there is way too much medium-density residential still in this plan. Um, one of the top comments. Of what people liked about living in Harrison from the survey was people want, quote, rural character. And if we're having small lots. Really packing in the housing, that certainly isn't rural character. So I believe we need to get back to rural character. So to spur some discussion, I'm going to break this up into sections. So my first motion. Is to change. All medium-density residential. East of County Highway N to low-density residential. And the area where we're targeting here, if you look on your map, that's going to be all along State Park, Brody Manor, it's walked up by Peyton. That that area of the map is kind of where you're looking, but just to make it easier, just east of, of it. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? We'll try that again. I'm sorry, just a little bit. Full second. So we have a motion by trustee Lancaster, second by trustee Grant Meyer to remove. Medium-density residential. For all land east of highway. And is it? Remove it completely or are you replacing it with something else? Replace it with low-density residential? There's a. I almost have too many mics on, so let me try and sound a little. Trustee Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, my only, I don't have a plan with me either, and I should guard it. But um, does changing this medium-density housing include, or I should say preclude, any senior housing development? Whether, and I'm talking about independent senior living, whether it be cottages or some type of, you know, structure. Um, if it does, I'm reluctant to do that because one of the other things that the survey had said that we sent out at the end of twenty-three, I believe it was. Was that we had, what was it, over sixty-some percent of people who want some type of senior housing in Harrison? And I think that, you know, I know we've talked about this before, but I just feel like we're ignoring those four hundred respondents who said something. And that, that was a pretty heavy response for a survey of that size. So that's my question is, do we allow ourselves then room somewhere to at least talk about senior housing in the future if we change these from medium to low-density?
If, if I made sure I can address that. So the answer would be if we went to low-density. Uh, housing in those areas, you would not be able to develop those types of duplex-type cottages for a senior house.
Okay.
So I know there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of concern about medium density. So the medium density is really put there as a transition. Um, it could be anything in the future. Um, it's four point two percent of the total land use that's in the whole village. Uh, so it's a very, you know, pretty small amount and I know there's feelings that there shouldn't be any. Um, but it's, you know, it's just giving some different housing options for the future. Maybe this board doesn't uh like it. But in, you know, five, ten years, maybe the next board has a different feel towards it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, um. Trustee Lancaster.
Thank you. Sorry, I don't want to dis- disagree with you, village manager. But if I'm reading the definitions here. I don't believe it would preclude that because. I'll read the definition here. It says, low-density residential land in the sewer area designated for low-density housing. Mainly single and two-family homes clustered at up to five point eight units per acre with street access. Mainly include the many residential development to encourage walking. And the compatible zoning, R S two, R T, and then we could add R S one as well there. And then typical uses building forms, single-family homes, two-family units, accessory dwellings. So when you're talking still a density of up to five point eight units per acre. When you think about a R S one single-family home. You're usually a third to a half an acre, and my last point three five, for example. So that would be less than three homes per acre. So you're, you're adding a lot more. You still have some fairly dense housing there. The difference on this. The definitions here, when I go and I look at medium-density residential, when they're talking about fourplexes and things where you're talking. Up to eight homes per acre on a medium density. So that's where you're just. I know maybe it's split inherited a little bit, but again, it's that resi, it's that rural residential, rural character trying to balance here. If I'm looking at these definitions, I'm just going off of the plan here.
You're accurate. Um, you know, it's really, as I said, we're just trying, we just trying to put land uses in that kind of represent. What it could be. I mean, this could all develop as low-density and we modify the plan and in a way we go. But if there is an interest in the future for a little bit higher density, at least there's some flexibility and it's kind of that transition zone. So it's really up to whoever the board wants. Um, we'll make it the way you guys prefer to be.
Okay, any other comments on this particular motion? If not, we're going to have to do a roll call. So I guess we'll start with trustee Lancaster.
Hi.
Hi. All right. I'm gonna say aye.
Aye.
And we've got a motion that passes for um, to move one. Uh, disprove. Any other topics, run other changes that I want to propose? So I'm going to propose one, which is having to do with the area on Lake Park Road and Manitowoc Road. Currently, right now, we have heavy density or medium density residential. I particularly don't like this area to be residential when we have right above it to the north commercial and then to the south we have commercial. So I probably believe that when you have a left-of-road like Lake Park. Um, I think that should, would be a perfect um area for uh Lake Commercial instead of say, what's any A. Medium-density residential there. So I would like to make a motion to change that from. Uh, medium-heavy or medium-density residential to to commercial on that.
Uh, thank you. Just to clarify, you're talking the northeast corner of. Lake Park and Manitowoc, is that accurate?
That's right.
I will second that motion.
Yes.
Commercial or light commercial.
Um, right now, there's no distinction between um. Light, medium, or heavy. Because there is a difference between industrial and commercial. So.
Just I.
Commercial. What's that?
Just be commercial.
Just be commercial. Okay. And the way I envision it, I'm not asking the liquor store there or anything like that. I would envision professional services kind of like what is already on the the west side of the pot, if you drive down that area. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion?
Sorry.
Trustee Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I don't want to be a naysayer on this, but if I'm, if I'm correct, we just changed the medium density that was proposed to light density, right? Is that accurate?
I mean, we are proposing. Medium-density residential and that uh parcel to commercial. Which would coincide with the land use that is already to the north and to the south.
Right. But the motion that just passed, didn't that make that particular segment light density?
No, that, that was for, that was for.
East of.
He, that was east of.
Understood. Okay, my, my mistake. I'm sorry. But I, I still have a question on this because if we're trying to continue to, you know, keep this more of a rural feel, if we're going with that philosophy. Um, I just, I want to speak as a citizen. Now, I'm not so sure that I want to see more of that developed into commercial. Um, I'd rather see it as residential, so I'm not in favor of changing that, but I'll hold it accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Otherwise, um. We're going to head into a roll call vote on the current motion. Trustee Lancaster.
Hi.
Trustee Redman.
Hi. Oh, yeah.
Hi.
Name.
And so that motion passes uh four to one. Any other proposed changes or discussion of the future land use plans?
Uh, yes.
Trustee.
Lancaster.
So the next section, I believe we should be removing medium-density residential topic is. Uh, off of Woodland. North and south. Um, by Christ the Rock Church there. And so east of Christ the Rock, south of Woodland, east of Christ the Rock. And then here in west of Spring Valley Road on the north side of Woodland. For point of discussion, just to clarify, there is also medium-density residential. To the west of the Blue Christ the Rock property there. Um, south of Woodland, which is next to the apartment complexes. I am not proposing to change that and I will not be making a motion to change that. Um, I see that as an opportunity to leave some medium-density residential yet and seeing that the apartment complex is all around there. You're not going to have single-family homes there anyway. So. Um, they were numerous one loss there. So I'm not looking to hear about every single piece of medium density here, but sorry, but I, I, I motion then. Um, south of Woodland. East of Christ the Rocks, blue, uh, public use. And then north of Woodland, west of Spring Valley Road.
Just a point of clarification, is it the two parcels east of Christ the Rock?
Correct.
Okay. And that's the two blocks north of Woodland?
Correct.
Okay.
So there's two orange pieces. You want to change both of those?
Correct.
Got it. So is that your motion? That's my motion.
So these two and these two.
And that would be a low-density residential. Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
No second.
So we are seconded by, oh.
No second.
So we got a motion and a second for changing the. Uh, medium-density residential for the parcels north of Woodland Road from. Uh, Christ the Rock, which ends west of Spring Valley Road. And then changing also the medium-density uh. Closing from uh east of. Christ the Rock Church and south of Woodland Road.
That's correct.
Correct. Four, four partial control.
Any discussion? If not, let's go ahead and do a roll call. Trustee Lancaster.
Hi.
Trustee Redman.
Hi.
Trustee Redman.
Hi.
I'm going to say aye.
And I'm going to say aye again, just I feel like we're cutting out any possibility for senior development. So, no.
So that amendment passes for to one. Is that all the changes that you have proposed? Trustee Lancaster.
Sorry, one more. I wasn't sure what special we'd have, so let's ask. But the last one then is removing. Uh, change, or I should say changing uh any of the median. Uh, any of the medium density housing. West of Lake Park Road. To low density residential, again, with that allowing up to five point eight units per acre, I do believe that still leaves us. Senior housing out here, so, but that's my motion. Which which is charged with these stores, uh, west of Lake Park Road.
So we got a motion to change the. Medium density residential housing east west of State Park Road, west of west of like west of Lake Park Road to low density residential.
I think.
So.
West of Lake Park.
Oh, second.
So we got a motion by trustee Lancaster, we have a second by, uh. Trustee Grant Meyer, any discussion?
Yes, does that include those parcels north of Ethan Drive?
It does.
Okay. Just wanna clarify.
So I will make a clarification with this, this pretty much wipes out all medium.
Except around where the apartments are.
Southern where the apartments are.
Which are?
West of.
First block. Eastern.
Trustee Van Hafdi.
Yeah. There's that one development up there, I believe it's Dan's development on on. Midway and Lake Parker, is is that? Do with that, yeah, check that.
Yeah.
It's already developed.
Okay, just.
So okay, with that, we're gonna, any other discussion on this one moment, if not, we're gonna do a vote call, trustee. Lancaster.
Hi.
Just a bit higher.
Hi.
Just a bit handy, hi.
I'm gonna say aye.
Wait.
I mean, one case that motion passes four to one. Okay. Do you have any other? Pointing to the. Trustee Lancaster.
I do, thank you, that takes care of the man. There is some language that I was opposed to change. And it's around housing. And I guess I can pass this around or I'll read this. Um. So we are encouraging in here currently under housing, under goals and objectives. We have some objectives around. Building out, uh, nursing homes and community based facilities. And from an. Resource standpoint. If we are not looking to. Continue to increase costs of services. We've really gotta be careful what we ask for, or we're gonna overburden our existing. Volunteers providing the emergency medical services. Where their EMS calls for call volumes that skyrocketed over the last few years. And. When you talk a nursing home. Those are very intense service intensive. Types of, um, facilities, and so we have to be really thoughtful as a village on where we wanna go. Um, doesn't preclude. A proposal from coming forward that certainly could be talked about in any of the commercial area, you know, or different areas here, we have mixed use and things on the. And the maps and stuff, so. But it should not be something, I do not believe that we are trying to have staff. Promotion. And so that's why I'm going to make a motion. To remove a sentence. That says. Provide opportunities for and encouraging the development of retirement and senior housing, including nursing homes and community based facilities. With access to transit, walking, biking paths, recreation, nearby shopping and entertainment, um. And also. So I'm sorry, you're trying to tell our word this rate. Actually, just to make this easier, so we were gonna replace that, so what I'm gonna propose is to replace that sentence with. Provide opportunities for and encourage the development of retirement and senior housing. As long as no village financial incentives are required.
So we have a motion to have a second. Trustee Grandma.
Oh, second.
Discussion.
Yes.
Trustee Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. President, so I just wanna clarify, you're saying that. Um, that language change would include resident or retirement or senior housing. But eliminate nursing homes.
Correct, and eliminate. Financial incentives being provided by the militia project has to stand on its own merits, that's the most of it all, but. So I would caution you to put that in the complan, the board has already adopted a resolution that pretty much takes that out of there. Um, I think you're. Pying future boards by spelling that out, I'm right when taking out the language, but I would caution on putting. Language in there about financial incentives, because there's no way language anywhere else in those plans, and that plan under goals for. Financial incentives, I think that's something the board needs to just take care of on a case by case basis, so.
And I'm just. Glad you came in, that's okay. Um, I'm just going to, I'm gonna use a strong word, and I don't mean this in a disparaging manner, I just don't have another synonym for it, but it almost feels like we're getting discriminatory against. Citizens that are aging in our community. Support the nursing homes, you know, I I understand that, but. I just think we're getting pretty harsh in terms of, you know, the way we're treating people who may have lived there all their, outlived here all their lives. And who like to still remain in this community, but don't have anywhere to go, that's my thought.
Thank you, um. I do have.
Three comments.
Just turn your mic off. Thank you, um. I think to. I agree with Chad, I think that language is not necessary since it's a dream, but. My concern is, is we are in. Right now, in the midst of a fire study, which is including EMS service. I firmly believe that we need to see those results before we step forward and say we're promoting this, we need to look at. The cost benefit of whatever we put in and make sure that we can support it. And that the new development can pay for it. Right now, I firmly believe that we need some more. Information as far as what. Where we're at and where we're gonna be based on our complan for future services like fire EMS. Snowplow, operational costs, utilities, all that stuff. I think personally. I think we need to get those before we can, as a board, unify and say, we are promoting this or this. I just don't think we can just unilaterally just say, yeah, this is what we want, but we're not sure what it's gonna cost us as far as. Services in the future, I think we need to understand those pieces before we. Step in and say, this is what. I don't agree with your motion, but I think if you reword it, I think you could get my support. Trustee Lancaster, okay.
So I'm gonna reword my motion. I think I can actually just make this a lot simpler then. So change the. Third objective here of providing opportunities for and encouraging the development of retirement and senior housing, et cetera, et cetera. Just standing right there, and period, provide opportunities for and encouraging development of retirement and senior housing, period, rest of it. Was awesome.
And does the second still hold?
Yes.
So you got a motion in the seconds, any more discussion? Otherwise, we'll go ahead and do a vote call, vote trustee Lancaster.
Hi.
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 That motion, uh, the motion passes. I believe that's it, that's too long to discuss, or is there anything else there now?
All right, just give me one second. No, I think that's. Okay, my only, I guess the one thing question, I don't know if it really requires a motion or else, I guess I just have one question for. Chad. Page, on the page seventeen, number four. There is a note here about amending village ordinances to provide appropriate standards for the development of lot sizes that accommodate various housing types. Were we looking at needing to make a bunch of change? I mean, we're not trying to make a bunch of smaller lots, I guess, is mainly, but I wanna make sure, because again, that we're all larger. Can it stop, as long as that's not what that means, I'll just leave it and that we can be done with this for tonight.
Hmm, I'll look at that just to make sure that that wasn't the intent.
Okay, okay. Thank you, and thank you to the board for your patience, we're supposed to make three.
Next up, we have item twelve C.
Um, this is a special event permit for Omar and Bristle Vargas wedding, and staff recommends approving the special event permit application submitted by Bristle Vargas.
Trustee Baldwin.
I will make a motion to approve the. Omar and Bristle Vargas, uh, event wedding as printed and circulated.
Trustee Grandma.
Oh, second.
So we have a motion by trustee Baldwin and a second by trustee Brandmeier, any discussion?
I'm sorry.
Your, your, your mic is still wrong. Sorry, um, if not, let's go ahead and vote your ballot.
Interesting. Oh, that, yours is, my mic is okay.
And a motion passes unanimously. Next up is item twelve P.
This is a special event permit for Brody Hibbes, um, for Brozopa Sound Garden, and staff recommends approving the special event permit allowing July at that school.
Trustee Baldwin.
I will make a motion to approve the special event permit for Brody Hibbes for the, for Sound Garden.
Trustee Van Hafdi.
Hmm, oh, second.
So we have a motion by trustee Baldwin and a second by trustee Van Hafdi, any discussion? If not, let's go ahead and vote your ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have item twelve E.
This is the approval of the Kama Komi Police Services Contract Addendum One, and the motion to Addendum One to the Kama Komi Sheriff's Office Police Services Contract to Adam Charles Sergeant Harrison.
Do I have a motion in a second, please?
Trustee Van Hafdi, yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, the Kama Komi Police Services Contract Addendum One as printed and circulated.
Trustee Baldwin.
That was second motion?
So we have a motion by trustee Van Hafdi, we have a second by trustee Baldwin, Chad, can we please, um, talk to this moment, please?
Sure, so this was the item that the board discussed, I believe, in the April meeting about bringing another. A full time supervisory position on in Harrison to, uh, manage the staff, kind of do some public relations. Uh, and be around to kind of correlate, uh, activities and things that are happening with the village staff. Um, so the board had previously unanimously approved it, so this is just the contract that goes with it.
It has this been.
Would that buy the village to me as far as you would wish?
It has, I guess. It had no issues.
Any more comments or discussion? If not, let's go ahead and vote your ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have payment certificate, or I'm sorry.
Ball that out.
Payment certificates for various projects, and the motion is to approve payment certificates for grassroots business park and standby generator project.
So is that F and H together?
No, that's, that's separate.
Okay. Trustee Lancaster, a motion to approve. Trustee Van Hafdi, oh, second. So we have a motion by trustee Lancaster, and we have a second by trustee Van Hafdi, any discussion? If not, go ahead and vote your ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have twelve G.
Um, this is the approval of change order number one for the Department of Public Works Garage Project for five thousand two hundred and eighty four dollars and eighty four cents. And the motion is to approve change order number one for the. Works for garage project for five thousand two hundred and eighty four dollars and eighty four cents.
Do that again, Matt, like. Trustee Lancaster.
Make a motion to approve, uh, change order number one for the Department of Public Works Garage Project for a amount of five thousand two hundred and eighty four dollars and eighty four cents.
Trustee Van Hafdi.
Oh, second.
So we have a motion by trustee Lancaster, we have a second by trustee Van Hafdi. Chad, can you please discuss this?
So we, is this a decrease? I took this as we had an increase, like forty five, uh, forty five hundred and fifteen dollars and sixteen cents to add the elevation to the building, and then we had a. Um, decrease of nine thousand eight hundred dollars to remove the fire alarm system, because it's being provided by another vendor. Because then the five thousand two eighty four would be an add.
To decrease. Because it's ninety eight hundred. It's a negative ninety eight hundred plus the four five, so it deducts fifty two eighty four.
They did have a lot, so it's a deduct of five thousand two hundred and eighty four dollars and eighty four cents. Sorry.
So I think technically we will have to have an amendment to your motion, or if you wanna scrap it and try to go. Trustee Lancaster.
Yeah, I'll adjust my motion to say decrease versus an increase.
And you're okay with a second?
Yes, just.
Okay.
Sorry, we are all between shots.
So any other discussion?
Something I put you on the spot there, I shouldn't.
Well, the attorney was already vetted in my ear.
If there's no further discussion, go ahead and vote your ballot for the D P W, so. Fifty two eighty four, eighty four. And the motion passes unanimously, next up, we have item twelve H.
Um, this is the approval of change, change order number one for the standby generator project for fourteen thousand one hundred and thirty six dollars. And the motion is to approve change order number one for the standby generator project in the amount of fourteen thousand one hundred and thirty six dollars.
Trustee Baldwin.
Thank you, I want a motion to approve change order number one for the standby generator project in the amount of fourteen thousand one hundred and thirty six dollars.
Trustee Grandma.
Oh, second.
So we got a motion by trustee Baldwin and a second by trustee Grandma. And any discussion?
Just for the public's sake, so this is to, uh, do a new panel location that did work, the panel was larger than where needed to go, and then to redesign the. Lower the building with the expansion of the garage to make sure that it could handle the loads for the expansion.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Trustee Lancaster. My only question is sort of, is source of funds, since part of this is because of the DPW expansion? Should this really come from the Buffalo Brian of that project? Which is free construction? This really is in streets.
Ours is to the right. Yeah, we are, I think it's actually gonna be the interest of the borrowings in the capital funds.
Correct. Sounds good, so.
It's all kind of a capital.
They're all coming from capital.
Capital, yeah, for this.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? If you guys could do me a favor when you get done talking, just turn your mics off, right, which kind of helps me out a little bit, because I got a lot of people on this here. All right, go ahead and vote your ballot on this. And a motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have twelve I.
This is approval of change order number one for twenty twenty five asphalt street resurfacing program in the amount of thirty nine thousand seven hundred and thirty five dollars. And the motion is to approve change order number one for the twenty twenty five street. And the motion is to approve change order number one for the twenty-twenty-five street resurfacing project program for thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Trusty Van Hafte.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the change order for number one, twenty-three thousand, so, cheaper servicing program. In a month of thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, which comes in circulation.
Item one here by trustee Van Hafte. Trusty Allen Baldwin.
Thank you, I will second motion.
So, well, this is simple by trustee Baldwin, any discussion?
Yeah, so the, the, as the memo states, fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars of this will come from the Stormwater Fund to cover repairs to, uh, broken storage steward grates, um, these Napdraken and Strathflower project, and then the remaining twenty-four thousand forty-five is to pay the trails at the new, Redway Park, and those will be funded with TIB four funds that the board could see approved.
Any other questions or comments? If not, go ahead and vote your ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have item twelve G.
This is the approval of a nineteen-foot electric scissors lift for fourteen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And the motion is to approve the purchase of the nineteen-to nineteen-point-nine-foot electric scissors lift for fourteen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Trusty Lancaster. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, as printed and circled.
Trusty Brandmeyer, oh, second. She got a motion by trustee Lancaster and a second by trustee Brandmeyer, any discussion? If no discussion, please vote your ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have twelve K.
Sorry, this is the approval of purchase of up to four additional speed radar signs and the corresponding budget adjustments. And the motion is to approve the purchase of up to four additional speed radar signs, no corresponding budget adjustment.
Trusty Baldwin.
Thank you, I'll make a motion to approve purchase of up to four additional speed radar signs and corresponding budget adjustments.
Trusty Lancaster, I'll second. So a motion by trustee Baldwin and a second by a trustee Lancaster. Um, I wanna say really appreciate that, um, this call on this, I think it's, uh, very good for us to, um, put these out there so that we can provide, our partners with County County Sheriff's Department with the data needed to, see where we're at with, with, uh, speeding and spending on our own village, so, thank you. Any other discussion or questions on this? Otherwise, we're gonna ask you to vote your ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have twelve L.
Um, this is the approval of amending hours of operation at Village Hall. And the motion is to amend Village Hall hours from seven-thirty to three-thirty to be uniform for all staff.
Trusty Lancaster.
So do we know, uh, how many people come in from that three-thirty to four, because if we're going back to three-thirty, closer earlier than anybody else in the valley. I understand the rationale makes, does make sense here, though, but just, um, how do we make sure we're providing individuals that work during the day or whatever that may need to get down here and opportunity, I guess?
Um, I will say, obviously, we've not documented, but I've been saying till four, usually a lot of staff are here until then, just to help cover, um, I will say it fluctuates every day, but I wanna say within that half-hour timeframe, we typically probably get less than two people and a lot of times it's zero. Uh, you know, we didn't document exactly, but from what I've seen, it's against two people, okay?
Would it ever make sense on like a meeting night? To have a, like, one day a month, then basically, that the office would be open till five or five-thirty?
Most of the staff goes home, so that means the manager would have to run the, run the calendar, I don't think that's a good thing, okay?
Um, also, we'll chime in to say that obviously each month, typically it's the last Tuesday of the month, but during holidays, you know, months that could change, so, becomes kind of difficult to also post one day open and to get that, I guess, for to the public to run one day, but also.
Sure. Understandable, you go. Yeah. Trusty Baldwin.
I will make a motion to approve, I'm sorry, to amend the Village Hall office hours to seven-thirty to three-thirty for all staff. When does this start exactly? That's the one, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, I guess I realize we didn't, uh, it would probably, I mean, whenever the board wanted, I think it would potentially be at the start of a week, so I mean, next week, is June thirtieth, and then obviously it's first July, um, if the board would wish to wait a couple weeks so we can maybe get a little more information out, that's totally up to you.
And I'm just going to suggest that we just leave it open-ended for your discretion to decide when that starts with notification to the. Is that okay? We do a motion?
A couple weeks, a whole half. Couple weeks, is that what I asked? I understand, maybe you were probably gonna give it, maybe then.
When to?
August first or so, so we can run a follow-up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry here today. Sorry, I'm thinking.
Sorry, trying to get out.
Maybe official a month. And we do some Facebook and website posts on it, maybe started as a, whatever, the first.
Sorry, mine gets a little bit of a calendar error here.
The first, August first, or whatever that date is, um, August, August fourth. Or maybe Monday. So I'm thinking if you wanna just amend your motion to make it the August fourth, that would give us a month to notify the public.
I can do that, I would like to make a motion then to amend the Village Hall office hours to seven-thirty to three-thirty to be uniform for all staff, starting August fourteenth.
Your second's secure. And so, discussion, I guess. I firmly believe that, um, we should provide the public as much opportunity as possible to act, be able to come in after work, and I know I myself personally have come in. Be able to sort of fall the fog, and everyone's done through the company thing, I don't know who's in and out, but it is nice to be able to come in, at three forty-five and be able to talk to a staff member, so. I, I'm, more honest, I would say the staff.
Situation, but.
Also believe that it's in the public's best interest to be able to be open. For when they're able to come in, and not everybody's gonna be available to get here by three-thirty, especially if you've got a drive or whatever, and, um, it is a bit of a drive just to get to the beach from, or the population's not around right now. So I would say, ah, I want to be imposed, I think staff would maybe take a look at this, a little bit more and be able to maybe think, think, okay, maybe Mondays and Wednesdays, or, I get Friday half-days in the summer, I get that, and I've seen in the memo, other comm- community cases, uh, or other municipalities, do the half-day Friday, I get that, I'm not perfectly fairing that, but, I do believe we should have, availability for staff for those people who can't make it before three-thirty, so. I don't know what the rest of the board feels on, but that's kind of how I feel. Trusty Brandmeyer.
I'm almost positive Sherwood's going to three-thirty, and we're the same as ours. I saw it on your site going through too. So, we're in a mirror, we. In their next board meeting.
Trusty Lancaster.
Thank you, I guess my follow-up other question would be, and I know some of the stuff's been on the radar, and I get, you only get so much time in a day, so I understand that. But is there any extra resources or something then that we could put around getting some more things on the web? That someone can do without having to come down here? Thinking about their dog tags or yard waste sticker, things like that, yes, it might cost us seventy cents, or even the first class stamps are going to, in a couple weeks, right? To mail it back to them, but if we're not having the counter time at the counter, I don't think we're gonna, it's not gonna cost us more to provide service, I don't believe. To maybe make it more convenient for people that way, that if they didn't have to even come down here, you know?
Yeah, I can chime in on that, um, at the next board meeting in July, you will be seeing, um, a change in our credit card provider, uh, just to provide a little more, efficiency too, and PCI compliance with not touching the part, so with that comes some options of doing some online payments, um, and capability there, obviously, it's gonna take a little bit of programming, but that'll be coming forward in front of you in July, uh, for that contract, it also integrates with the tax software, uh, for tax deduction come December, and also staff has looked at two different accounting softwares, which will probably be coming forward during, um, the budget season upcoming, but some of those have some capabilities, to do more online, obviously, I understand not everyone in the community, you know, wants to do business that way, but hopefully that'll allow a little more online access as well. You know, but that'll be coming forward.
And a lot of the, a lot of those people coming in are to get yard waste, uh, stickers? So if we can develop a process that, that allows for online yard waste, that may find out on a lot of visits to the front. Cuz there's a ton of them coming into a little yard waste there, right?
Yeah, so maybe that's the top one first to try to do, and.
Yes.
Then they're not having to rush here. To get, knowing they wanna go drop something off, or anything like that.
Next up, we have trustee Van Hafte.
Yes, um, I am against this. I think we should at least go to four o'clock. We're growing by a hundred million dollars a year. Two consecutive years in a row.
And we're not sure what, sure, there's only three thousand five hundred people.
We're six, close to sixteen thousand people here now, and I, I've been worried about, and I'm, I'm actually looking, to get some feedback from, um, the community on this. Um, we're, we're trying to open up to more to the community and get their feedback, so I'd like to see what feedback we get over the next thirty den, thirty days. Facebook or whatever, and see what, what, what other cards we see, and then go from there. I just don't wanna just do this. Cuz they're just growing so fast, and you know, a lot from just coming out of the comprehensive plan, I mean, a lot of commercial development going on, we got more going on now than ever. And I need to, uh, I just don't know the reason why is, but I'm looking to help for the community here, and I wanna see what they, what they see about this, and then, um, and move forward. After thirty or forty-five, eight, evaluation.
So we got some, all the comments, go ahead.
Right, um, do I introduce?
Sure, hold on to the mic, I'll turn it on.
Okay.
Actually, I'll have to push the.
Hi, my name's Wendy Yingling, W five four eight four, military roll. And my comment on that, you're talking seven-thirty to three-thirty? That's strictly eight hours, is there a lunchtime? In addition to that, or is there no lunch, is that eight time?
We're open straight through from seven-thirty to three-thirty, so we, we're open during the lunch hour.
No, I meant, when do you take your lunch hours? Are you working eight hours a day, or are you working seven and a half for only seven hours a day?
We're not taking lunch hour, we just eat at the desk while we're answering phones.
Okay, I'm just curious about the forty-hour work week, if that's what we're paying for, or not? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I was just curious as to why, why the request? Give me a second.
I can speak to that, cuz obviously this is my.
Yeah, I was gonna have to pump the middle.
So obviously, right now, staff has changed, or some staff internally has, and prior, I believe, when the, schedule changed, I believe it was till three-thirty at one point, and a couple years ago it was changed till four, a couple staff members had volunteered that they preferred to work, the shift of eight o'clock to four o'clock, with that staff change, it's been difficult to, I guess, assign people to the eight o'clock to four o'clock to make it fair, because obviously, if, you know, a lot of the staff right now, they were hired from seven-thirty to three-thirty, so to switch that mentality to ensure we have coverage at the window for that eight o'clock to four o'clock shift, when majority of our employees are hourly, it's been shown to be difficult, and to not play favorites or assign who is the person that stays, has been a little more difficult, um, you know, so that's kind of why to make it uniform. We did put out a survey asking, you know, employees, what their thoughts were based on some of the local communities, if they were willing to work seven-thirty to four, and then potentially having shorter days on Fridays, because, you know, a lot of people do live off Fridays and, uh, just trying to make an estimate, and, and I mean, about seven people out of the ten office staff were four, and the other three were not, based on some of their, you know, kids', you know, schedules, or if they volunteer, things like that, so it wasn't a unanimous vote. Uh, also with that, there's obviously certain staff, when it comes to segregation of duties on who can do what, and when there's vacations, you know, in next week, there's a three of us off, one for, you know, medical appointments, so it becomes difficult then, who has to stay, and to make sure that we have scheduling in the morning and in the evening to ensure, again, we have segregation duties and coverage, so that one person is not here by themselves between the three-thirty and four, for a security perspective.
Trusty Van Hafte.
Yes. I disagree with what you're saying. Look at Winnebago County and other counties in this area. They require their, um, people to at least take a half hour to order lunch. Per day. That gives them to, time to relieve stress, and do other things, and I, and we're working right through our lunch hours here, I, I, I'm just not for that, just because of, other companies around here are making their employees take a half hour to order off every day, to properly, um, recharge their batteries after a stress, stress of morning or afternoon, and, they just, um, we're just skipping a whole lunch hour immensely, we're, we're not getting the best out of our employees, so, and, and services. And there's, it's my take on that, and there's a lot of evidence, so, in the, like, Winnebago County, they, they're making their people take a full hour off. I mean, I think a half hour would be suffice. And based on what other people are doing in Valley, and that's not a, an opinion, people need to take time to have a lunch versus, working through the lunch, you know, I think mistakes can be made when you got your soda and your sandwiches, or, they mean, I think that's, you know, getting the best out of employee, that's based on, proper business practices.
Thank you, trustee Van Hafte, I would agree with you, now, any other discussion from the board or the staff, otherwise, um, we're gonna have, it's too long for the motion, a second. So let's go ahead and vote your order ballot. Trusty Lancaster.
So I'm just gonna say at this point, I do appreciate bringing this suggestion forward, my vote on this is going to be no. Because I do believe we cannot be taking things away from the community, especially when we do not have the web things and stuff in place. I do think that, but, for, for my opinion anyway, here we be, let's keep some of that stuff in place, and I think that, and I would be willing to revisit myself at that point. Also, maybe you can get some community feedback. On, and with staff. I see an opportunity here that maybe you do a shortened Friday. So that, that can be a benefit to the employees, actually, to leave a little early on a Friday, actually. So, while giving some later accommodations for us, the week for people to feel like coming down here, so, thank you.
I guess, I disagree with you three, as far as, getting off at three-thirty. If to your kids, ex- external, regular activities, doing. When I grew up, my kids' eye farm, I didn't see half, the ball games and that stuff, so, I mean, happy employees make good employees, so I think, we're making a moment out of it there. It used to be three-thirty, it worked then. I'm in favor of it.
Hey, any other comments or discussion, otherwise, let's go ahead.
Well, we got another one, mine was your last one there, yeah, that's my last one. To any more thing, I too, I just wonder if, so, in my Fulton career, we have people that have, we wear a call, you have to be on call twenty-four-seven, basically, and there's simple, and there's rotation, and, part of this, we'll see where this vote goes, I guess, but part of this, encourage to work with this whole rocks a lot, their staff, and is there a signup sheet? That you can put out, people kind of know, and take your weeks, if, if need be as well, and maybe that's.
And maybe that's something to.
They'll still make it fair. For everybody that way.
Okay. Go ahead and vote her ballots. And the motion fails. Three, two, four, three guests. So my suggestion is, is take our feedback and. Maybe try to get some community inputs. Maybe try to come up with some sort of plan that would accommodate. Keeping it open, but yeah, keeping the employees to have that beyond, so for me, it was legally. I got a question. If someone comes to the point and says, hey, I wanna take off at three to go see my kids track me. You guys pretty much accommodating that or do they gotta come in early, gotta make up that time? What does that work?
I can see that. I, it depends. I mean, sometimes they will make up the hours and say, you know, I'll come in a half an hour earlier or work the next day. Thirty minutes later, they'll flex. Some people do that, some people will just take a PTO time off. It, you know, it depends, but potentially on their workload. If they've got a lot, they might make up the hours. It just, it again, depends on. Both options.
Okay, I hope we're flexible enough that we allow those opportunities. Okay, good.
We are to a certain point because a lot of those employees are hourly employees versus salary employees in their mix trillions.
Okay, moving on to the next item, which is item twelve.
This is the approval of Crossroads Business Park lighting for seventy-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twelve cents with Lee Energies. And the motion is to approve the quote of seventy-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twelve cents. From Lee Energies to install lighting in the Crossroads Business Park.
Oh, try to get it. Trustee Lancaster.
Motion to approve uh, the quote of seventy-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twelve cents from Lee Energies to install lighting in Crossroads Business Park.
So we got a motion by trustee Lancaster and a second by trustee Van Hafde. Jack, can you speak on this a little bit?
Sure, so um, we feel as staff that the new Crossroads Business Park should have. Lighting given that it's a commercial uh, business park and there's gonna be a lot of activity at different hours of the day and night. Um, typically in our residential subdivisions, we don't have any street lighting, but. Uh, given the nature of what this is with commercial and people who linger on for the safety of employees, we believe it's uh, needed, so. Um, this is similar to what we put up at Farmers Field. It's just gonna be fixtures on wood poles, um, LED fixtures, um. And, you know, we energies provides that to us at a reduced rate, so your staff was recommending.
Any other discussion? If not, go ahead and vote your ballot. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have item twelve N.
Uses to purchase twenty Motorola APX six thousand portable radios, chargers and mics for the fire department not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. And the motion is to approve the purchase of twenty Motorola APX six thousand portable radios, chargers and mics in the amount not to exceed sixty thousand.
Trustee Baldwin.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of twenty Motorola APX six thousand portable radios, chargers and mics. The amount not to exceed sixty thousand.
Trustee Van Hafde.
No, second.
So we have a motion by trustee Baldwin and a second by trustee Van Hafde. Um, I guess my only question is, is we don't have a quote, we just are gonna go there purchasing, don't exceed. Is that how that's gonna work? Oh, yeah.
Correct. There's a quote in the packet from France Radio. Um, should premise this will be for the Harrison Fire Department. France Radio is the preferred vendor. That we use for all of our radio systems, so it makes sense to stay with the same vendor.
I was just curious about the not to exceed if we already had a. Park ward.
The total of the code is fifty-five thousand, seven forty-four. I don't know if you're the difference.
Just to play the same, every dollar happens, over ready, et cetera, et cetera. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Trustee Lancaster.
I just wondered what it is in the memo, but wanted to thank the chief for. Um, finding and seeking out the assistance for this, where these funds are coming from the. Uh, EMS program through the Wisconsin funding assistance, so had no cost to our taxpayers. I just want to make a job of the chief for finding funds and obtaining this, so. Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, let's go ahead and add more ballots. And the motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have item twelve O.
This is open discussion and consideration of appointing Megan Linkler um, interim village clerk to the village clerk. Um, prior to potentially going into closed session to discuss employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data. Um, over with the government body as jurisdiction or exercising responsibility. Uh, if this is approved, then obviously the oath of office would follow. And then the motion is to approve the appointment of Megan Linkler as village clerk. Human Resources Manager effective next Monday, June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
So if I may just interject, chair. So in the memo, um, it talks about uh, the rate of pay. Uh, for this position near thirty-five thousand, ninety-three cents. If the board so chooses and wants to discuss further about. Uh, performance and salary, I would, I would encourage you to go to the closed session related to that and then we can finally make a motion. And if the board doesn't. Feels comfortable with what's stated on the memo, uh, we're even make a motion and we don't have to go into a full session.
Trustee Lancaster.
So I am comfortable putting the memo, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the appointment of Megan Linkler as village clerk slash human resources manager effective June thirtieth. Twenty twenty five. Uh, at the rate of the. Uh, grade J step six. Seventy-four thousand, seven thirty-four. Um, here is this position is exempt.
Trustee Baldwin.
Will second that motion.
So we have a motion by trustee Lancaster and a second by trustee Baldwin. Any other discussions? Other than I would say I will concur and we're excited to have you on board. So with that, go ahead and vote your ballot. And the motion passes unanimously.
If we can take a brief recess, um, we would like to do the oath of office right now, so we can square her in and she's in that little right away, so. I will uh, distribute the old to Megan.
And with that, I will make this uh, motion to have a break or. Motion to have a five minute break to swear on our new. Um, swear. Hold the paper, say hi.
Hi.
Ready, hon, is the person I've ever done the vote.
Put your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Megan Linkler.
Who have been appointed to the office of clerk.
Who have been appointed to the office of clerk.
So swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my abilities. So help me God, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You have three donuts in the house.
Congratulations, Megan.
Thank you.
So I think chair, the next two items, item P and Q. Um, one of them is related to hidden gave an LLC development proposal and the other one is related to the Eisenhower Drive extension. Um. I I would be happy to. Um, get a little summary and open session on both of those, but I think the board should go into closed session to discuss. Uh, some of the specifics related to the future of those two projects.
And I will confer to them, so, um. I would request a motion that we go in a closed session for both items. Twelve P and twelve Q.
Why don't you read the first.
Alright, so twelve P would be open discussion and consideration of request for hidden LLC to discuss possible incentives for our commercial development. Prior to potentially going into closed session to discuss strategy and bargaining authority for the village manager slash planner to use in negotiation of developers agreement. Uh, and the motion would be to proceed into closed session to discuss the possibility incentive for this project.
So what I would say as a um, kind of back on the public. Um, so the, you'll recall at the last board meeting or two board meetings ago, there was a discussion about this project on State Highway one fourteen. Um, that has since changed. There was discussion about looking at. The village owned property in the southeast corner of State Highway fifty-five and KK. Um, just adjacent to the Crossroads Business Park. So the developer has uh, submitted a request. That's in your packet as well as a proposed site plan to develop that event barn center type. Uh, entertainment facility at that location. He has requested four hundred thousand dollars of TIF incentive. Um, and the cost of land at twenty thousand acres, so. Um, the village will be discussing in closed session the possible incentive amount. Uh, relating to this project.
Any questions or concerns by the board or anyone in the political board? This particular item. She's not again, looking for a motion and a second to go into closed session.
Can we, so sorry, could we also have her read uh, Q? And then um, we would take a motion to go in the closed session under nineteen point eight five, one C for. One C and one E for both of those items.
Sure, so Q would be open discussion related to developing a plan to extend Eisenhower Drive from Midway Road to Woodland Road. Prior to potentially going into closed session to discuss strategy and bargaining authority from the village manager planner to use implementing the plan. Long former vice partner memo was sent to to a flat from a current role and then action, which is to make a motion to proceed into closed session to discuss.
Trustee Megan Hafde.
I'll make the motion go into closed session.
Go ahead, which, do you wanna read the? If you wanna go in, I'm sorry, Megan, Jack, but to go in the whole section, session. If it's the proper procedures for someone to make a motion. And essentially read. Uh, item thirteen, it would be thirteen B and then C, well, the whole thing. So a motion.
So it isn't just twelve O, you know, it's.
Fifteen and B, thirteen D, thirteen E.
But you need to state that and not more than that. That's the agenda I don't correct.
Okay, I'll I'll make a motion then for. I can TV and more, you can get in the post session, considering the Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five. For the purpose of delivering and negotiating the best in public funds for our competitive or. Bargaining reasons require a closed session specifically. To establish strategy relating authority from the useful village factory negotiations of Republican states in terms of development. With a hidden payment LLC. Attending. To make fluid the village. Board, village manager, finance, local treasury manager, village clerk. Search clerk now, operations manager, village engineer and village attorney. Also, thirteen C, the board may convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statute nineteen point eight five for the. Purpose of liberating or negotiating the best in public funds. For whatever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session specifically to discuss the strategy and bargaining authority to be used by the village manager to acquire real estate. For the extension of Eisenhower Drive from Midway and Woodland Road, the teams may include. The board, village manager, interim village clerk slash clerk. Finance director slash treasurer, operations manager, village engineer and. Village attorney is printed and circulated.
So we have a motion. Let's be a second. Just grandma.
No second.
So we have a motion and it's by trustee Van Hafde and a second by.
Let's do my counters.
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, yeah.
Kyle. Alright, you're now in closed session.
So I don't know that we will come out of closed session. We probably need to adjourn in closed session. Um, cause I don't believe there would be any motions at this point. Um, so for the public, he, he does, you don't need to stick him on, I know.
Why don't we go ahead and adjourn for five minutes, um.